Order the Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, 6:00 PM, School Board Meeting. Please rise for a moment of silence. Okay, we will now have the colors presented by FPC Air Force JROTC. We have Second Lieutenant Elena Hoya, Cadet First Lieutenant Cassandra Buchanan, Cadet Second Lieutenant Wyatt Corbett, Cadet First Lieutenant Sophia Thomas, and led by Master Sergeant Gardner Holland. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the National Anthem.
Oh, say that you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous spight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. Then the rocket's red glare, the bursting and bursting fumes, through the dark cloud I was still there, O, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And retire the colors. All right, thank you all. Please be seated. Okay, we will move on to roll call. Starting at the end of the dais.
Danny Neves, FPC Representative.
Johani Strong, Matanzas High School Student School Board Representative.
Janie Ready, District Three School Board Member.
Lauren Ramirez, District Five School Board.
Derek Vars, District One.
Kristi Chong, Present.
Will Furry, Present.
LaShaka Moore, Superintendent.
Okay, so now we can move on to special announcements. And our first one tonight is Agenda Item 2.02, Black History Month, presented by John Winston. Please come forward, Mr. Winston. Welcome, sir.
How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
To the dedicated members of the Flagler County School District Board of Directors, our distinguished school superintendent, ladies and gentlemen all, I deliver greetings to you from a proud, historic, African-American community of achievers and patriots, often imitated but never dupocated. I am John Winston, President Emeritus of the African-American Mentoring Program, AMP as it's called, Flagler County School District. And on behalf of our President, Carl Jones, officers and members, I once again have the privilege and honor of reading into the official record of the school district the 2025 Resolution recognizing the month of February as Black History Month. Whereas, the recognition of Black History Month is a time to salute and educate our students about the contributions and sacrifices of Americans of African-Caribbean descent to our nation's culture and history. And whereas, we celebrate the establishment of Black History Month, which began on February 12th, 1926, and expanded into 1976 as part of the nation's bicentennial in recognition of the humanity, perseverance of people who survived against incredible historic odds to help shape our future. And whereas, in educating children in this public K-12 system, it is appropriate that all children learn about, reflect upon, and cherish the contributions that citizens of African and Caribbean descent have made to our nation in the realms of the arts, business, civil rights, education, entertainment, military, music, law, literature, politics, religion, science, and much, much more. And whereas, the Flagler County School District celebrates Black History Month and the contributions of Americans of African and Caribbean descent, both past and present, have made to our nation, as well as others who have demonstrated extraordinary courage, talent, and service to our schools and community. And whereas, in 2002, the African-American Mentor Program was designed specifically to close the reading achievement gap for males with the girls' division added in 2011. To date, the AMP has served more than 1,900 students from elementary to high school. Currently, there are 64 students participating in the program. And whereas, the graduation rate for African-American students continues to increase, which is indicative of our students and families accessing quality education opportunities provided by our organization and using it as the foundation for a successful and post-secondary career and quality life. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that we designate the month of February 2025 as Black History Month in Flagler County Public Schools. Adopted by the Flagler County School Board on the 28th day of January 2025, William Fury, Chairman, School Board of Flagler County, and LaShaka Moore, Superintendent, Flagler County Schools. I take this opportunity to tell you that after 24 years of service here, we can never be more proud than the accomplishments that have been made to date. And it takes all of you, working together in concert, to save one child. God bless you.
Okay, we will now move on with our next proclamation. We have the Career and Technical Education Month, presented by Ms. Renee Kirkland. Welcome, Ms. Kirkland.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Superintendent Moore. I'd like to present tonight a resolution recognizing Career and Technical Education Month in Flagler County for February 2025. Whereas, career and technical education serves as the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce, offers lifelong learning opportunities, and contributes to Florida's leadership in the national and international market. And whereas, increasing the availability to all Floridians of high-quality CTE programs and credentials is a priority and provides Floridians with a school-to-career connection, helping students experience practical and meaningful applications of numerous skills. And whereas, secondary schools in all 67 school districts, 28 Florida colleges, and 48 technical colleges and centers offer high-quality CTE coursework certifications, skills-based education degrees, and co-curricular programs. And whereas, nearly 800,000 K-12 CTE students, representing the highest number of CTE students enrolled in the K-12 level in the state's history, more than 380,000 post-secondary CTE students, and over 17,000 registered apprentices engaged in workforce education. And whereas, locally, over 800 secondary students are currently enrolled of one of the seven Registered Career and Professional Education Academies, and more than 30 Registered Career themed courses. And whereas, in 2022, Flagler School students earned over 400 industry certifications among nearly 30 different certifications. And now, for let it be resolved by the Flagler County School Board that February 2025 is recognized as Career and Technical Education Month. And be it further resolved that Flagler School supports the valuable work of its career and technical educators in doing their part to positively impact our district, provide meaningful opportunities to our students, and create a more qualified workforce for our community. Adopted by the Flagler County School Board this day of January 2025, signed William Furry Chair, School Board of Flagler County, and LaShaka Moore, Superintendent, Flagler Schools. As a representative here tonight, we have Instructor Dills here from our EMT program. If you'd please stand. We'd like to thank him for his service. And we also have our current cohort of EMT students from Flagler Technical College. If you all would please stand and be recognized. And we have just a few that would like to say a few words to you about what this program means for them.
Good evening all. My name is Jasmine Lopez, and I have been a part of this program now for maybe like five, six months. It's been a wonderful experience, and I've really enjoyed my time here with learning about the medical field and especially being in the EMT field that is constantly growing and changing all the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Goyas. I go to Flagler Pomco's High School, and I attend FTC's EMT program. This program has taught me a lot and gotten a lot of in-the-real-world experience with the fire department and the time on the rescue. And this will really help me get a head start in my life and graduate with a full certification to start working with Flagler County and hopefully retire with Flagler County. Thank you.
That's so great.
Okay, I'm not as young, so I actually have to read something. My name is Melinda, and when I was asked how the EMT program has helped you, my response would be that the program has helped me to be comfortable with being uncomfortable. I love learning, and that part is comfortable. But staying up late to read and do homework, constantly being told or being pulled away by my hungry children, working my business, not retaining information like I used to, that's not comfortable. But I do view being uncomfortable as an opportunity for growth. At least, that's what I'm telling myself. And as far as my long-term goals for being an EMT, I'm not really in that chapter of my life where I want to spend too much time away from my family if I were to work the, you know, traditional 24-hour shift or if a hospital setting would be stimulating enough. But lately, I've been exploring the idea of being on scene for sports events. I currently am a lieutenant and a volunteer with the Civil Air Patrol and Emergency Services and serve as a Health and Safety Officer, where I'm able to extend some of my knowledge to the young cadets. And it is my sincere hope that I continue to grow, and I look forward to serving my community. And right now, I'm just kind of enjoying the journey.
Thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you.
We'd like to get a picture with all of you up front here. If you come up. Here, eyes open. Thank you, guys. All right, thank you all for being here and presenting those proclamations, sharing your stories. So we will now move on with the agenda here. And this moves us to our Spotlight section. And 3.01, that is our Superintendent Spotlight. Oh, my apologies, I skipped over one. So we're going to go back to 2.014, Dating Awareness, presented by Ms. Brandy Williams.
Board Chair Furry and Superintendent Moore. My name's Brandy Williams. I'm the Coordinator of Counseling Services currently for Flagler Schools. It's an honor to serve in the position. I also have some community partners here with me that are going to be joining me in reading the Teen Dating Violence Awareness Proclamation. Sorry, I might not have highlighted. There we go, okay. So I'll just give them a chance to introduce themselves real quick.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ren Prokopovich. I am the Youth Advocate at Family Life Center, the domestic violence crisis organization here in Flagler County.
Hi, my name is Deanna Yule, and I'm a victim advocate with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office.
Hello, my name is Brianna Miller, and I'm also an advocate over at the Flagler County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, ladies, for joining me tonight in the reading of the Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month Proclamation. So a resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing February 2025 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. Whereas, the Flagler County School Board is committed to the well-being and protection of our youth, the safety of our communities, and fostering a society based upon mutual respect for one another with zero tolerance for any forms of victimization and abuse. And whereas, dating, excuse me, teen dating violence is a serious crime that affects one in three teens and can involve physical, sexual, verbal, emotional, economic, or other abusive behavior, including harassment and cyberbullying via texting, emailing, instant messaging, or posting on social media. And whereas, women who are 16 to 24 years in age are more vulnerable to intimate partner violence, experiencing abuse at a rate of nearly triple the national average. And whereas, dating violence affects teens across all races, genders, religions, nationalities, and socioeconomic statuses. And whereas, the 2025 theme is Respect That. This team, this theme advocates that respecting someone isn't just a vague idea, it's action and a mindset. The theme also highlights the importance of treating partners with dignity, listening to their viewpoints, respecting their boundaries, and valuing their autonomy by focusing on respect. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Flagler County School Board that hereby, that they hereby declare February 2025 as National Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month in Flagler County, and applaud the efforts of the many victim service providers, police officers, prosecutors, national and community organizations, and private sector supporters for their efforts in providing awareness about teen dating violence. Adopted by the Flagler County School Board on this day of January 2025, signed by Will Furry Chair, School Board of Flagler County, and LaShaka Moore, Superintendent, Flagler Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay, we'll now move on to our Spotlight section, and we'll start off with Superintendent Strategic Plan Spotlight.
Thank you. I yield my Spotlight time for the spotlights that we have here tonight.
Okay, so first up, our next spotlight is the Flagler County Education Foundation, and we have Ms. Teresa Rizzo. Welcome.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to spotlight the impactful work of the Flagler County Education Foundation throughout the month of January. But before I get started on that, I have to give a huge thank you to Don Foley and Carrie Henderson for an amazing Flagler Schools Teacher and Employee of the Year event last night. The energy was absolutely incredible. The energy was absolutely incredible. And it's truly one of the best events that I can remember. In fact, one of the sponsors who attended last night would like to sponsor next year a cash reward for the best red carpet walk. So we're looking forward to that. School leaders, get ready. All right, so let's talk about the incredible success of our senior scholarship program. This year, the platform closed on January 21st and I'm thrilled to share with you that we saw a significant increase in student engagement. Last year, we had just over 200 students complete the scholarship application. This year, we had, with an intentional effort to raise awareness of the scholarship program, we were able to have 300 students submit their applications. That's a remarkable 50% increase. We're so proud of the students for taking advantage of this opportunity and now this election process begins. Local organizations and school committees will review applications to award scholarships that will truly make a difference in the lives of our students. Next, I want to highlight the impact of our Make It Happen program. We don't talk about this program very often, but this month we were able to assist a family facing incredible challenges. With one parent homebound due to medical issues and the other struggling to get to work on unsafe tires, the situation was dire. And thanks to the generous community partner Quantum Auto, we were able to provide that family with four new tires, getting them back on the road and able to support their family. Another heartwarming story involves a student in urgent need of medical care, but without insurance. We are deeply grateful to Denise Hubbs, CEO of Advent Health Palm Coast, for stepping in to meet the need of this student and ensuring that she received the essential care she needed. These moments remind us of the power of partnerships that truly can transform lives. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge the unwavering support of our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, and each of you. This month, you joined us in thanking our Take Stock in Children mentors for their incredible commitment to our students who are at risk, students to stay on track for graduation and beyond. Your support helps us recognize and celebrate their vital work. So in closing, I would like to say thank you to all of you for supporting the Education Foundation, mission to empower students, educators, families, and our community. We're really making a difference and it's because of the partnerships like these that we're able to continue to thrive. So thank you for the opportunity to share these highlights tonight.
Okay, our next spotlight will be Sunshine State Spotlight presented by Heidi Alves and Sarah Lombardo. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board members, Student School Board members, and Superintendent Moore. We're here to share a little information about a wonderful program we showcase every year, the Sunshine State Scholar. Every year, we identify a scholar and alternate who excel in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics with hopes to pursue a STEM career after high school. These high school juniors must meet several criteria. They obviously have to be a high school junior, they have to have expressed an interest in a STEM-related study after high school, have a weighted GPA of 3.9 or higher, and must be on track to receive the Florida Bright Future Scholarship.
The Sunshine State Scholars Event will occur on April 10th and 11th, 2025 in Orlando, Florida. The Commissioner of Education, the Senior Chancellor, and representatives from Florida's colleges and universities will be at the event to discuss higher education opportunities available to them in Florida. There will be workshops for students and parents related to college applications and funding. Before we let our high school administrators introduce these two deserving young people, we would like to share a video from last year's event.
How will STEM be used to solve current problems?
Okay, now, if I'm looking at these problems...
You are among the top 11 graders from across the state. You are some of the top 11 graders who are focused on STEM education.
I've always had a passion for math. My mom's a math teacher. So... Just kind of being able to...
Okay, well, we're having some technical difficulties with that, so we will make that available to watch online, so.
Thank you.
It's on board docs in case anyone wants to go.
This year, we had two very worthy applicants who went above and beyond the criteria for the renowned program. I would like to introduce our high school administrators to introduce and brag a bit on our 2025 Sunshine State Scholar and Alternate. In the event that the Sunshine State Scholar cannot attend in April, the alternate will take their place. This year's alternate is from Matanzas High School. Principal Bozeman is here to introduce Ms. Megan Ree.
I'm proud to be here to introduce Megan Ree, who's Matanzas High School's nominee for the Sunshine State Scholar and will be serving as the Flagler County Alternate for this program. Megan has been involved with STEM since a very young age as she has spent countless hours growing up around her father's dental office. So she got a firsthand view of what it's like to work in a STEM field. This has inspired her to follow in her dad's footsteps and want to pursue a career in dentistry. During her time at Matanzas, in addition to taking just about every AP and ACE course that we offer, she's been involved in a multitude of activities including student government, future problem solvers where she is a two-time state champion, marching band, and both cross-country and track where she's competed at the district, regional, and state level in her three years of participation. In her essay for consideration for this award, Megan wrote, "I've come to realize that STEM has really had an immense impact on my life and will continue to shape my future. My love of science and math has brought me to where I am today academically and without question will be a primary focus of mine in college as well as professionally in the future. Megan is dedicated, reliable, and hardworking. She has a very bright future and we're very proud of her. Congratulations." This year's Sunshine State Scholar is from Flagler Palm Coast High School. Principal Basardet is here to introduce Mr. Said Hader.
Good evening Board, Superintendent Moore. FPC is proud to introduce this year's Sunshine State Scholar, Mr. Said Hader. Said demonstrates exemplary characteristics in all aspects of Bulldog life. Said is a junior in our IB program and has excelled in both his AP and IB coursework and exams, including scoring a Level 5 on the new AP pre-calculus exam and 4s on AP Stats and Computer Science Principles. Said has chosen to focus his HL coursework in IB on both math and science, taking HL Math II and biology, as well as taking SL physics. He also boasts an impressive 1440 score, placing him, or PSAT score, placing him in the 98th percentile of all testers worldwide. Said not only excels in the classroom, but also takes part in a full load of extracurriculars at FPC. As president of the Red Cross Club, he helps to connect students to humanitarian volunteer efforts. Said is also an extremely active member of our Mu Alpha Theta Chapter, competing and excelling in pre-calculus and trigonometry divisions. Said also is an active member of the local bridge club and volunteers on teen court. Said aspires to major in biomedical engineering at the University of Florida with the goal of working in the field to enhance patient care. FPC is so proud of all Said Hader has accomplished thus far and cannot wait to see what the future holds for him.
Congratulations to you both. Please come up front for a photo. Okay, our next spotlight is Indian Trails Middle School Certificate of Recognition and Mr. Principal Ryan Andrews will be presenting. Welcome, Principal Andrews.
Good evening Board, Superintendent. I am here tonight, I'm Ryan Andrews, I'm the principal at Indian Trails Middle School, but I'm here tonight to recognize two of our amazing scholars. But before I do that, I do want to, I know they've already left, but give a huge shout out to our Flagler County Fire Rescue EMS, EMTs. They support our schools daily and without them, we would have some very interesting situations happen on our campuses. But the two that I am about to recognize, I think could be future leaders in the program that was previously spotlighted and it was very fitting that it happened just before us. So get right down to it. Earlier this semester, or excuse me, right at the end of last semester, in December, right at the very end of the school day, we had a major medical emergency on our campus and we had fortunately two very prepared students in that classroom. Skylar Boleo and Avery Trudy, they happened to be in the classroom and immediately jumped into action. Because of their first aid preparedness and their confidence, they were able to start directing other students to move furniture, to go get help, call the front office, and even started supporting the person during their medical emergency. Their preparedness, their confidence, and their calm demeanor and quick response allowed for our school nurse and Flagler County EMS to respond in less than five minutes, getting this employee the necessary lifesaving treatment that they needed. These students are great examples of the Indian Trails Big Three, to do what's right, to do your best and treat others how you want to be treated. And their confidence and their preparedness again was instrumental in the care that this employee was able to receive. At this time, I'd like to call up Avery Trudy and Skylar Boleo to the podium.
So we gave them a nice certificate of appreciation for a job well done and to recognize them. They also got some Mustang swag bags. But I do want to take a second and give a shout out to our teachers as well. So with us tonight, I have Ms. Shannon Russell and Ms. Ashley Wilson. Sorry, this microphone, I feel like, you know, I'm like Anchorman, I don't know what to do with my hands. But our two, our two teachers, if you guys could stand up here real quick. Thanks, Bren. So our two teachers here, they were fortunate to have one of these scholars. Skylar is in their health and PE class where they had previously written a grant this year to receive some funding to help train and prepare scholars in emergency medical situations. So right now, they're working on CPR and first aid, first responders, care and skills. And Skylar happened to be in that class, so we attribute some of the skills she's learned through that to the situation that has fortunately been so successful and to celebrate. So Coach Wilson's got some stats she wants to share with us real quick and we'll celebrate the girls.
All right, my name is Shannon Russell and this is Ashley Wilson and we are PE teachers and health teachers at Indian Trails. We introduced CPR and first aid at Indian Trails and this past semester and we hope to empower our students with the skills needed to respond to emergencies. Never did we imagine that these skills would be put into practice so soon. Skylar and Avery, your actions saved precious minutes, minutes that made a difference in ensuring that one of our Mustangs received the care they needed. Emergencies can happen at any time to anybody and Skylar and Avery, we are reminded of the power and knowledge and the courage that it takes to act. So as of last semester, first semester, I just wanted to share that we certified, Ashley and I certified 109 students in CPR and first aid and yes. Skylar being one of them. And second semester, we have a potential of an additional 268 students to be certified in CPR and first aid. We're very proud.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I'd like you to come up for the, for a picture, please.
The mom, the mom.
The mom!
The son. The mom's got to take a picture.
Thank you, son.
Thank you for letting me respect the moms. I gotta make sure they're good. Right up here, guys. Thank you so much. Good job, thank you.
All right, so that leads us on to our next spotlight here. We have the Employee Teacher and Rookie of the Year and we have Mr. Foley.
It's actually going to be Ms. Moore. And so we are so excited to just come back, another opportunity to celebrate the amazing men and women who represent our employees, our teachers, and our rookies of the year. We're going to start off with elementary and so I do ask Ms. D Ford to come up. This is going to be short and sweet because last night we danced, we had a great time, right? It was so much fun. But we are going to call each of the categories and then we will take a picture with all of elementary, then we will go to secondary and I Flagler and FTC will be included in secondary, okay? So their names and if they're employee or rookie of the year. All right, let's go.
Good evening Chair Furry, Superintendent Moore, and Districted Board. As the proud principal of Beltwood Elementary, I am so happy to introduce to you Ms. Ashley DeMeo, our Rookie Teacher of the Year. Mr. Shanker, our Employee of the Year, come on up, sir. And Ms. Nicole Massey, our Teacher of the Year. All right.
Excellent, and they will come up front. We have Banale Elementary next. Come on, Banale Elementary. And after Banale Elementary, we will have Old Kings Elementary. If we keep it moving quickly like this, we won't say like graduation, right? Hold all applause to the end? All right.
Okay, good evening Board, Superintendent Moore. Unlike Ryan Andrews, I do not require a special microphone. I would like to introduce our Employee of the Year who is not here this evening. Her name is Cynthia Torres Shutey, we're very proud of her. Our Rookie Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Christina Rexford. And our Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Amanda Schultz-Davenport.
Good evening Board and Superintendent Moore. On behalf of Old Kings Elementary School, please help us in congratulating our Employee of the Year, Ms. Kathy Cirillo. Our Rookie Teacher of the Year, Ms. Douglas. And our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kim Aramanda.
And Wadsworth coming up right behind Remfire.
Good evening Board, Superintendent Moore, and community. I want to recognize our recipients for Remfire, our Rookie Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kaitlin Our Employee of the Year, Ms. Cynthia Q. And our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Colleen Welsh.
All right, good evening Board and Superintendent. I am so excited to announce our winners for Wadsworth Elementary School, Ms. Brandy Martz...
Ms. Brandy Martz is our Employee of the Year and also as of last night, the district employee. Ms. Eva Mender is our Rookie of the Year. And Ms. Allison Sensabaugh cannot be here and she's our Teacher of the Year.
We will get a picture as Buddy Taylor begins to come towards us.
Let's go Kripper.
Okay, sorry, sorry. He's excited.
Kidding. Let's get everybody in here. They like you like each other. There you go, thank you. All right, one. Okay. Stay right there, here you go. One, two, three, up here, eyes are open. Thank you.
Yes, it was a great celebration last night. It's a great way to finish it off.
And you get to actually see their faces, right? Because of them dancing down.
Right.
Good evening Chair, Board Superintendent Moore, Kara Cronk from Buddy Taylor Middle School and I am very excited to announce our Rookie Teacher of the Year, Ms. Brittany Our Employee of the Year, Ms. Felicia Magnuson. And our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Jamie Everidge.
We'll have Flagler Pomco's High School and Matanzas High School.
And from Indian Trails Middle School, our Employee of the Year, Ms. Felice Grushkin. Our Rookie Teacher of the Year, Mr. Andrew Hobbs. And the newly selected Flagler County Teacher of the Year and Indian Trails Teacher of the Year, Brandy Anderson.
I'm not gonna use the mic. I'm proud to announce, I'm honored to announce, FPC's Rookie Teacher of the Year, Ms. Lindsay Knight Stewart. Our Employee of the Year, Ms. Rachel Hoosier. And our Teacher of the Year, the OG himself, Mr. Phil DiAgostino.
All right, good evening, our distinguished pirate educators, our Rookie of the Year is not able to be here tonight, Mr. Andy Douglas, our Carpentry Teacher. Thank you. Oh, is he here?
Oh, I'm sorry, Andy is here.
Andy's here.
A husband and wife duo, both rookies of the year.
Double trouble. Our Employee of the Year is Ms. Wanda Pittman. And our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Ashley Forrest.
I Flagler and FTC.
Good evening School Board Chair, School Board Members and Superintendent Erin Quinn, proud principal of I Flagler Virtual Programs and I am honored to announce Ms. Amy Perola as our Teacher of the Year.
Good evening Board Superintendent, Flagler Technical College is proud to present Ricky McHugh as our Employee of the Year. And Jean Crawford as our Rookie Teacher of the Year.
Scoot in a little bit for me, help me out. Forget, I know every time. All right, right up here, smile everybody, smile, lots of smiles. Thank you, congratulations.
We will now move to our departments, we will have Custodial Service, Food Service, Plant Service, Teaching and Learning, Technology, and then Transportation.
Good evening everyone, Nancy Anderson for Custodial Department, proud to announce Ms. Sandra Bishop as our Employee of the Year.
Good evening Board Superintendent and guests, it's my honor to introduce the CAFEEDU Employee of the Year, Trudy Hamel.
Good evening Board, Cory Bush Plant Service Director, I'm proud to present, nominate Todd McAndrews as Plant Service Employee of the Year.
Good evening Board Superintendent, it's my proud privilege to recognize Barbara Ostrender, Teaching and Learning's Employee of the Year.
Good evening Board Superintendent Moore, I'm proud to present Becky Bernhard, our Representative
Good evening Board Superintendent, Student Board, I'm proud to introduce Transportation and Fleet Services Employee of the Year, Mr. David Bowman.
Right here guys, everyone's looking up.
And our last spotlight is our Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Mandy Kravrotis. You get a picture all by yourself.
Trust fall kind of thing, right?
I'm so sorry, you can't be in the corner. Ms. Kristen Bozeman, Principal of the Year, come out and back up here.
Not together.
No, she gets involved with the mom's friend, then we guys get together. It's fair Mandy, that's fair.
You know they're just gonna live on my phone, I can do it though, click, click. Here we go, right there. All right, together. There's the one I need, I need the money shot, excellent.
All right, what a wonderful thing to celebrate tonight and now we must move on with our business for the rest of the evening. And that will start off with approval of our minutes. I'd like a motion to approve Agenda Item 4.01 through 4.03.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Bars and I'm sorry, Ms. Ruddy, you seconded. That's okay, I was looking up, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. Okay, so before we move on with the rest of the agenda, do we have any changes or adoptions to the agenda?
Yes, there is an addition to our instructional calendar that has been added. That item was presented to the Board back in December, but we failed to get it added to this meeting. We did consult with Mr. Delaney about our timeliness in order to get this on for tonight and so we do ask that that be considered tonight, it is an action item.
Can I just clarify, it's being presented in an edited format from when it was presented to us at the workshop.
Yes, and it will be finally announced tonight.
Thank you.
Very good, so I need a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with corrections.
I have one other item. With regard to 7.03 Request for Board Approval of Vendor Payments, I wish to separate that vote into two separate votes so that I can recuse myself from check number 328508 for a conflict of interest.
Okay, can I have your pen real quick, sorry. Okay, I'm sorry Ms., which item was that?
7.03.
No, the, the item you wanted to have.
Check number is 328508.
Okay. All right, so I'll need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Cronk and a second by Mr. Bars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, it passes unanimously. Okay, so that leads us to public comment, do we have anybody signed up for public comment this evening?
Not on agenda items.
Okay, so not on agenda items, there will be time for a public comment on off agenda later on. And so we will move on to our consent and I just want to let the public know that these tend to move quite quickly, but please know that we have workshopped these items extensively and if you need further details about our conversation on these items, you can access them by watching one of our earlier workshops that take place on the first Tuesday of the month and also preceding this meeting. So we will, I'll ask for a motion to approve our Finance Consent 7.01 through 7.07 with the exclusion of 7.03 Check Number 328508. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bars and a second by Ms. Cronk, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, we will move forward. We will then separately vote on specific check number in 7.03, 32, check number 328508, I need a motion to approve.
Move approval.
I have approval, I have a motion by Ms. Cronk, second by Ms. Ramirez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, pass. Okay, so that leads us on to our next consent items, which are Academic Services 9.01 through 9.02, I need a motion to approve.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Ruddy.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Bars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. We'll now move on to Operational Service Consent, that's 10.01 through 10.02, I need a motion to approve.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Cronk.
Second.
A second by Ms. Ruddy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. We will now move on to Human Resource Consent, 11.01, need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bars and a second by Ms. Ramirez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, it was Ms. Ruddy, sorry, Ms. Ruddy, let's correct the record, Ms. Ruddy made the second and the vote again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, we will pass unanimously. That moves us to our first action item of the evening and that is Academic Services, we have two items. We have 16.01, 2025 through 26 Instructional Calendar, I'll need a motion to approve. A motion by Ms. Ramirez.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cronk, is there any discussion regarding this action item before we approve it? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. We will now move on to 16.02, Expulsion with Services for Student ID 1816000554. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Bars and a second by Ms. Ramirez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. Okay, that moves us on to Human Resource Action, we have two items here, 18.01, Western Governors University Clinical Education Affiliation Agreement, are there any, I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Cronk.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ruddy, is there any discussion regarding this item? Hearing none, we will call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, it passes unanimously. Next is 18.02, School Board Policy 665 Revision, I need a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve as, as written.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bars.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ramirez, any discussion regarding this agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we will call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. Okay, so that now leads us to our Public Comment section and this is open to all topics that are related to the school.
Yes, Kathy Hyder.
Welcome Ms. Hyder.
Early parent participation.
Well, thank you Ms. Hyder, it's always a pleasure to see you, thanks for coming to our meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Are there any other?
Yes, Chanelle Channing.
Ms. Channing, welcome.
Our topic is Ask Parents or the Community Afterwards to Talk About Their Perspective Schools.
Welcome.
Yeah, a lot of congratulations on everybody, that was amazing. I like your spotlight section, that was really creative. And so normally you have a lot of awards that has to do with parents and the kids and just was mentioning, wanted to mention, I know you're, you're kind of looking into bringing back the, the public comment, the open public comment for the parents and the community and I know you want to keep it positive and I know that's a, a big part of the consideration and I can certainly understand that. And so wanted to put out the suggestion and that is, when the awards are given and before they run out, because as you can see, the galley just empties out after the awards are all given, maybe to invite them to speak a little bit about their school, because you know they're gonna say positive things. Because the whole idea of having the, the parents speak and come to these meetings is so that you really can get an idea of what's going on at their schools. You know, you're all attached to a school, but as you know at those SACS meetings, you're just hearing from the, the principal and a lot of times, just what they want to say. And when the parents come up here, you're kind of seeing the veil get split open and what's behind that. And it also empowers those parents that just aren't empowered otherwise. And so then if you mix that a little bit with the positive that, that those parents are feeling that just got an award, no matter what kind of mud that might be slung out from those parents that are just coming from the end of their day and on the way home, you'll, you'll have a kind of nice mixture, no matter what. So that's all I have to say and I hope that some- And I hope that somebody here can kind of address just where you're at in terms of trying to return that free public speaking. That's not just agenda only in the beginning of the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Channing. Are there any other public comments tonight?
No, there's no comments.
Okay, so I will close public comment, and we will move on now to board member requests. Are there any board member requests at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to upcoming board topics. There's no discussion there. Then we will move on to closing comments. We'll start down at the end of the board there, Ms. Neves.
First, I would just like to thank you all again for allowing me to sit on the days and represent FPC. Things at FPC are going great. Our Student Government Association is launching a very new project called Earth Friendly Moments with SGA, where they are enacting change for the environment. They already hosted Bring Your Own Reusable Water Days and educate the student body on different ways to eliminate environmental harm just in their daily lives. This past Friday, we held a pep rally that honored our winter sports, different clubs, and academic accomplishments from honor roll to college acceptances. Our very own formality singers had a student, Logan Walden, get accepted into the Florida Music Educators Association for All State. We also had two band students get into the high school honors band, Emma Harris and Matthew Ravidie. Our competitive cheer team qualified for Nationals for the first time in school history. And our boys soccer team is going to the five-star conference finale for the first time ever as well. Our girls weightlifting team competed at the district championship, placing third in Olympic and second in traditional. Maddie Brinker and Nia Williams were both double district champions, and 12 other girls advanced to the regional championship, which will be this Saturday. Just yesterday, as mentioned, we honored our rookie employee assistant principal and teacher of the year from FPC. So congratulations to those that won. That's all for FPC. This concludes my closing comments, and just have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, Danny. As we conclude today's meeting, I'd like to take a moment to highlight some of the incredible achievements across our school community. First, we're excited to announce that our sandbar is finally open and available to students during both lunch periods, providing an additional space for students to socialize and recharge. Our PBIS initiatives continue to foster positive behavior, offering students opportunities to earn a variety of exciting prizes as they meet their goals in a variety of targeted areas. Spring sports are now in full swing, and we wish our student athletes the best of luck as they begin their respective seasons. A special congratulations to our ace drama students for their impressive performance on an original play this past Friday. We also want to recognize our JROTC air rifle team for their outstanding achievements this season, including winning the regular season, qualifying for state, and earning the distinction of having the highest marksman in northeast Florida. Our step team has made a welcome return, and we've enjoyed seeing the energy and enthusiasm of our students reflected in a variety of clubs that participated in senior and club pictures. We also want to celebrate the remarkable achievement of our principal, who has been named Principal of the Year, a well-deserved recognition for her leadership, as well as our rookie and employee of the year from Matanzas. Congratulations to them. With the new hallway and walkway patterns now in place, we continue to prioritize the safety and accessibility of our school environment for both students and staff. Looking ahead, we are excited to share several upcoming events. NHS is now accepting applications, and we look forward to the spring media days for team photos. Our cheerleaders will be competing at the state level this weekend. And on February 18th, we will host an informational event to showcase our amazing programs for middle school students and their families. It is through the dedication of our students, staff, and community that we continue to create a thriving and supportive learning environment. Thank you for your ongoing support, and we look forward to all that we will accomplish together this school year. And then I also want to mention, thank you to everyone who helped with the event last night. It was absolutely amazing, and I hope to continue seeing that great, great work next year. Have a great, yeah, next year. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So first, to address where my headspace is regarding some of the public comments. I did comment on this at the last board meeting. And one of the considerations is that we need to prioritize the work of the agenda and topics to be voted on that evening. And so it makes sense to highlight agenda items and issues that the public wants to speak on first, address the work, and then take open comments for consideration for future meetings. In addition, as you could see, we use this forum to recognize many students, community members, and teachers, staff members. And if we hold them for an unknown period of time while public comments take place, I feel is unfair use of their time. In terms of a formal decision, however, I'm just one person. And we are going under a thorough review of our policies and procedures as a board throughout... Currently, we're all doing that work separately, and we'll be coming together in February to do some of that work. So just wanted to honor your request there. I too want to share in the wonderful joy in recognizing all of our amazing staff members and teachers last night. It was just humbling to be able to join in that event. And I know that what was represented is a small tip of the iceberg of the amazing efforts and work that's going on within our schools. And it has been really a month of a lot of positive highlights, joining the Take Stock in Children event, where we honored some of our volunteers. That has been wonderful. As well as spending some time with the leadership team members at FTC, FPC, BTMS, and helping to craft what my relationship will be with them as their board liaison. With that, I do want to turn to a less happy, joyful topic, although one that I hope we think of and fondly. We recently experienced a loss in our teaching community here at Flagler, Ms. Stacy Fabrizio. She was a colleague of mine many years ago when I was in the classroom, and she continued to teach and befell a major health issue on the last day of school last year. And really tried to overcome those health issues and recently passed. She was the health teacher at Rimfire, and she touched hundreds, if not thousands, of lives supporting events like Walk to School, Red Rubin Week, Snuff Out Tobacco, as well as helping us parents have those uncomfortable conversations with our prepubescent children in hygiene. Working with her, she had a wicked sense of humor and always had a smile on her face. So I take a moment to just reflect on her contribution, as well as just her as a person. She loved her Jeep, and I know she's riding it somewhere. And so the next time you see a beach sunset, I ask that you think of Ms. Fabrizio, as she would often post that in Facebook as her Friday send-off. So thank you to Ms. Fabrizio for all that you've done and lives that you've touched here at the school district.
All right, thank you. I want to thank our student school board members over here. I've seen them out and about in the community very recently, all over the place. So they're representing both of our high schools fantastically. So I'm excited to see your future when you're all grown up. So you're doing a fantastic job. The teacher rookie employee of the year, we all had the opportunity last night to celebrate them. Last week, I made it a point to try to meet all of them in person, and it really made a huge difference to me last night when I saw them getting their award. And then over the weekend, I actually ran into a few of them, you know. So I just want to let the community know, those that are listening at home right now on the YouTube channel, when you see your teachers, employees, and the rookies, because we know it's not just the teacher, it's our plant service, our custodian staff, even the children, our students, we need to thank them. You know, they are doing a lot. And I think just a simple thank you would just brighten their day. And not just the teacher of the year, right? Every single teacher, they're there for our kids. But I learned a lot just by meeting all of them. And something so simple will really change a life of our teachers and employees. They're human, too. So they're out and about, eating breakfast, just like we do. So that was great. Transportation team, I do want to let them know, you know, a lot of us, a few of us went there a few weeks ago to meet with them. It was great. Some of us are scheduling ride time to go on the bus. So anyone watching right now, we may be your bus driver assistant next week. So I'll be on the 4th, I will not be driving. But we just want to experience, you know, and do what we can as a board to help the concerns. And we know a lot of parents have concerns, guardians, and there are ways to solve them, but a lot of it is communication. So I really hope people that are listening are understanding. It takes communication. So we are a board, and we're your liaison, we're your connection. So we're going to do what we can, but parents and guardians have to do what they can as well. So it, you know, it's, there's always three sides to a story. So we're doing our best, and we want you to do your best. And we hope that with further communication, we can solve a lot of problems and see what positively, positive things are happening out there. Take Stock in Children, I know they talked a lot about that. I want parents and guardians to know this program, if you're not aware of it, we're really trying to get the information out there. But there's a lot of opportunity for the children to get their lives changed by something so simple. So I'm hoping that, you know, the communication is getting spread more and more. If you're a child listening to this or a parent or guardian, please consider talking to your guidance counselor about if you are a good candidate for Take Stock in Children or other opportunities, because we do have a lot of resources out there that I think people aren't aware of. And I'm hoping we can help spread that communication out there. Lastly, I do want to talk about EPAC. So EPAC is our ESE Parent Advisory Council for Exceptional Student Education. And communication, I could go on about it, but this is really key with anything. So if you are a parent or guardian with a child or someone you know with a 504 plan, an IEP, or you don't even know what that is, and you think you may need assistance, I do want you to know that our team here, they are here to support our kids. And it can be frustrating, and it will be, and it has been, but there is help and resources, and it just takes the communication. And I keep saying that, but I think that's what I have been learning a lot being on this board, is it is communication, and we all have to do it. So I want to give, you know, our EPAC team full support. We have Vincent's Clubhouse, we have a lot of resources. So just communicate, ask, and we will help. Our schools will help put you in the right path for that. So I'm very proud of them. And yep, March 12th. And then I also just want to, lastly, when we had our Tampa training for school board, we did learn a lot about what these meetings are for. And I do feel that we have our communication phone numbers, our email. We're out and about in the community all the time, like more than I think we thought, but it's been amazing. So we're here to talk to parents and guardians 24, not 24/7, but a lot of times. So these meetings are amazing to go through these agendas and, you know, the action items. But other than that, we're here for you. So just, you know, feel free to reach out, and we will talk. All right, thank you so much. Have a great week.
Thank you. I do want to address what you had mentioned earlier about making sure we discussed the topic of public comment, which we will, I think Ms. Ruddy touched on that earlier, for us to look through our procedures and what that looks like to ensure that we get the public comment that is needed from our parents, from our community in general. I don't think anyone on this board, I can't speak for them, but I can speak for me, that we're constantly wanting to listen to parents, whether it's at this forum, or whether it's by email, or whether it's I need to meet you for coffee, whatever that looks like, to make sure that we're open and available to be able to listen to the needs of the parents within our community. So we can bring it back to the board, or we can address it with our superintendent. I think that's important for all of us, to ensure that. So I want to make sure that as you begin to, with folks throughout the community that you come in contact with, to make sure that they're aware that we're available to them with any comment, whether it's in this forum or whatever form, that you can get them in contact with us. I'll move on to say that as we go through the days of, you know, between meetings and after meetings and so forth, meeting with parents, teachers, staff, and students has just been an important part of being a school board member that I've had thus far, is understanding and learning. I think we're constantly, we talk about learning, but as older I get, I am continuously to learn about what I just do not know. And I'm thankful for the people that do know, that really have a drive and a passion to be the educators and be the support staff they are to make this entire function that we have run the way it runs. And it takes all of us. And I used to use the old silly saying that my grandmother used to say, it's like a lemon meringue pie. And we have to make sure the lemon meringue pie is nice and brown on the top. But if you cut into that lemon meringue pie, it's a mess. And so it takes everybody working together to make that top of that lemon meringue pie look good. And Ms. Moore does a great job of making that top look nice. And I really appreciate, that was a corny analogy, but I think you get the drift of it. So, and a couple of things, again, it goes without saying with all of our teachers and staff and so forth of what they do to drive student success. And I really appreciate that and what happened last night and the great work that everyone did to make that happen. Tobacco Free Florida, I want to met with some of those groups, that group this past week. And Preventing Youth From Starting Tobacco and Vaping. We, I just encourage parents to be involved in what's going on with that. I can remember vividly the fights that I used to have with my own child. I hope he's not listening here, but you have to stay on top of it. You have to be involved in your, in child's life, and just do not start smoking cigarettes and tobacco products. And Tobacco Free Florida, our Flagler, is a great program to help us educate our students, teachers, and staff, and parents alike. And as we get ready, ramped up for the legislative days that'll be coming up, as your liaison, we will continue to work towards making sure that our legislative priorities are focused on, that we can ensure that we can have success in the next legislative session that will benefit Flagler County with the priorities that Mrs. Moore has already presented to our delegate. We will continue working with them weekly and as we make trips to Tallahassee to ensure that our priorities are at the forefront. So I could probably keep going on, but I won't. I just want to thank all of our staff for welcoming us in as we come to your school and showing us around and letting us be involved with the teachers and also the students, and really just seeing the great work that's being done. So thank you very much.
All right, I'll just say congratulations again to all of our teachers and employees of the year. Last night was a great celebration, as we all got to see. That's part of the fun of, one of the things we get to do as a board. And I'm just thankful that we get to be a part of that and celebrate you all. And I'll just add, I'll piggyback myself with some of Ms. Ramirez's comments. Again, just letting you all know that we are available to parents. And I also want teachers to know, too, we are available. You know, if you ever just want one of our phone numbers, just ask somebody, and, you know, you can reach out to us and talk. We want to make sure that you have the resources you need, that you're not struggling in your classroom or whatever may be going on. You know, our kids come home and tell us lots of stories. So, you know, we just want to be available to you. Otherwise, have a great night. Thanks.
Thank you all for your comments. And I just want to thank our commenters that, tonight and every night, it's the community engagement that, you know, really helps balance out our decision-making. And we do want to hear from the community. And as you can hear from many of the board members tonight, the sentiment here is that there's an open door. Give us a call, email us. This is not the only venue. We know it's not possible for everybody to make it here for these meetings or workshops. But that is not the only way that you will be heard. And I will say that, you know, as board members, you know, our focus is here on policy. And a lot of the emails that we get- a lot of the emails that we get sometimes are more administrative, but we welcome you to send those in to us because we can help you get to the right person to get your problem solved. And I will tell you that in this organization, our goal is to get to yes for your child, and that is something that is rooted in our mission. So just be aware that we welcome that engagement from the public. And also, with that note also, I just want to recognize Council, former Councilwoman Hyder, we thank you for attending tonight and sharing your well wishes to our staff. And on that note, I want to just again thank everybody who was involved in putting that production together last night. It was a night of energy and fun and excitement. And even more encouraging is that a lot of that, those effects and things that you were seeing from a technical perspective were run by our students at FPC. I mean, we have some great talent. I mean, that rivaled a major production that they normally run.
The sound system that we drive out.
Oh, are you going to give the credit to the sound system? I think, it's the people that were running the sound system, no. But it was a great sound system, the sound was awesome. No, but for sure, we have some great talent, not only in our school, but clearly we have amazing talent in this organization, throughout this organization. And I would not want to be on the committee to have to pick the select few that we have celebrated in the last, you know, twenty-four hours. But it's clear that there are those that distinguish themselves amongst their peers, and we are so happy to celebrate them and their accomplishments. And with that, I will pass it on to Superintendent Moore.
Good evening and happy ninety-sixth day of school. It is a great day. I just, for the sake of the public and those who may be listening, you know, I count up the days, this is not by any means a countdown, but really to give each day its unique opportunity to be great. And so today is the ninety-sixth day of school, and it is a great day, and we're looking forward to the ninety-seventh day and every day after that. I too want to say that it was a great event last night, and you have to be in the room to really be able to feel the energy in that room to celebrate. I love that we have students, and we had colleagues and community members and families there to celebrate our amazing honorees. It was a great night, and to see our students being behind the scenes, running the production is powerful. And not just for that event, but every show that is there, professional show, our students are there, they are serving. And so I want to take a moment to just recognize Ms. Amy Fulmore and all that she does there at the auditorium to spread the love of arts to our students and to our community, so we appreciate her. If you did not have an opportunity, please go back and watch the one o'clock board meeting. We did talk about school choice today and those timelines. You can also find that information on our website, and families will be receiving information about school choice over the next few weeks as we gear up for those applications to open up on February fourteenth. I want to say, as the board has said, I too am available by email. You can also call into our office. I'm a bit behind in my emails today, but I do respond to all the emails that I do receive. And so for our families, if you have a question or concern, and you have gone to your schools, you've worked with those teams, please reach out to me. I will be more than willing to listen and help get to yes for your children. I want to just say to our staff, thank you so much. Lots of long days, long nights, and not just the people that are in the room, but when you go by our schools every single night, every single school, there are activities that are happening, and our staff is there, and I really appreciate them for going over and beyond for our students. And so I will end my public comments by going over our guiding principles as an organization, because it is important for us to have frequent reminders of the way we are going to work here in Flagler Schools. And our guiding principles say, children first, trust and respect for all, empower others, teamwork, excellence, quality, and consistency, commitment to individual needs, and then get to yes. Have a good night.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.